At six o'clock, please be advised the meeting is being recorded. Please rise for your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, as your republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and just rule.
Don, please note for record that Attorney Ray Kett is joining us virtually tonight.
Yep.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is the continued hearing, public hearing for 98 Menand Road, 9698. And Andy Brick, you want to take it away?
Hi, good evening. Andy Brick from Brick Law Firm. Just to update you since we've been here last, we had a very productive Zoom call with Lobella and Associates, worked through a number of remaining issues. We think we're in a position where we can seek an approval from you this evening, with the condition that we satisfy all outstanding remaining comments by Lobella. We ask that you consider that this evening. If you have any questions, Dan Hirschberg is here with me as project engineer as well. Thank you.
Matt, you want to review your letter that kind of sums up where we are?
So Lobella reviewed the most recent submission dated October 6th. Sorry. Lobella reviewed the most recent submission by the applicant stated October 6th and provided a review letter dated October 27th, which identified a series of additional requirements, not just the additional requirements, but elements that the applicant will have to satisfy in order to move forward with the project. As the applicant representative mentioned, we had a productive call last week, went through all of the outstanding elements, primarily, a lot of those are stormwater related, as well as Department of Health, Oland County Department of Health and DOT permits, which are in the process of being obtained. And we feel that the village board is prepared, is in a good position to consider approval of the project, with the condition that all of the outstanding items identified in the October 27th letter be satisfied. So it would be a conditioned approval and Lobella will work with the applicants to ensure that those elements are addressed and we would provide follow-up confirmation to the village board when each of those are completed. And then any outstanding permits will come in and again, we will confirm those and provide that input to the.
Okay, so they are seeking tonight what? Pardon me? They are seeking tonight.
They are requesting conditioned site plan approval.
This will be final.
This is a final, right. The village board had already issued preliminary site plan approval back in September and now they're requesting conditioned approval on closure of the public hearing, obviously.
Dan, do you have any concerns about addressing any of the items outstanding?
Well, no, we're clear on what we have to do.
Does the village board have any further questions, comments about the project?
No, they've addressed the concerns.
We can come back and report to the village board on completion of those.
Is there a timeframe you're looking at for that, Matt?
I would say you can really comply with those within a month or two.
Yeah, my guess is by the last week in November, the first week in December, we have all those comments we applied to and would already have a chance to go over them with Warren, who's doing the stormwater review.
Okay, so we're not talking well at the next year or anything like that? Does the public have any further comments about 9698 Menand Road? Go ahead, go ahead.
I do support for several reasons, so I'm urging every single village board member, please approve of this project. People, those engineers need that kind of housing project. So that's what I'm urging you to. Please. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no further comment, we'll close the public hearing in 9698 Menand Road. Next on the agenda is the continued hearing on 5056 Clifford Road. Matt, Austin, you want to talk first?
Yeah. I mean, we talked, I talked to Matt and we'll often Davis later on in the project. And we talked with Matt on the phone, we also had a productive conversation with Dennis Warren, and I think that we are able to meet their requirements. We talked with Warren, she ran down that list, I think it was like 13 items. And they're also asking for conditional approval, depending on being satisfied with.
Matt, you want to address that?
Sure. So Lobella provided the most recent letter dated October 13th. As the applicant representative mentioned, we did have a conversation, there's a handful of items. We feel it's appropriate to close the public hearing, just as a matter of procedure. Obviously, if there's additional issues that pop up, the village board is well within your power to resume the public hearing. A conditional approval, our engineers aren't satisfied that we can issue that today. We're not prepared to do that, but we do have an understanding of the outstanding elements. And speaking with Lauren this morning, we feel that we just need to follow up, confirm what's outstanding, because there was a food request from the applicant to waive some items that we don't need to get into tonight, but we haven't agreed to any of that. But a conditional approval, if those items could be clarified, perhaps could be issued at the next village board meeting.
So are you confident that the next meeting you'll be able to handle, end us one of these?
Yes, and while we're talking about preliminary site plan approval, okay, not full stop.
Okay.
So, and just as a matter of protocol, preliminary site plan approval generally has conditions associated with it, obviously, because there's a variety of elements they still have to comply with. But I think it'd be important to get the hearing closed tonight, focus on preliminary approval at the next board meeting, and then look to wrap up all the outstanding items for final approval in December.
Okay.
Okay.
Your engineer here, to address any, okay. Does the board have any comments about 5056 Clifford? At this time, okay. Does the public have any further comments on 5056 Clifford Road? Hearing no further comment, we'll close the public hearing on 5056 Clifford Road. Start the regular meeting at 6:07. First thing on the agenda is we need a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, October 16th.
A motion?
Second, all those in favor. Is anyone opposed?
Warrant number 10X, general, $601.09. Warrant number 10XX, $53,533.94. We're going to void check number 14503 for $23,250. It was a duplicate payment. Warrant number 11, general, $354,275.19. Water, $37,736.85. Sewer, $42,513.75 totaling $434,525.79. Payroll number 11, $129,969.91, and there's no transfers up until.
Before we make a motion on that, we are withholding the payment for $197,650 to Calanand until we are satisfied with the Menand Road paving job. Do we have to amend those amounts or can we simply state that?
We can just state it and then I'll amend it.
The board is in with that?
Yes.
So as amended, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor. Is anyone opposed?
Will they be coming soon to electrify the question?
We will address that tomorrow with Don's favorite friend from Calanand.
Oh, nice.
I need a motion to approve amendment of the health and dental and finance coverage due to, we're not, it could be a budget amendment, it's totaling $75,000 and dental by $3,000 due to we hired four people that weren't, that didn't have insurance and now have insurance.
Well, so basically, we had a couple of employees who were on, who were below the threshold, I think, to stay on their parents' insurance. They are now off that parents' insurance, so we had to allocate money to cover those insurance costs.
So we need a dollar amount in that or just?
It's $75,000.
It's just a budget transfer.
Oh, okay.
It's a budget amendment.
Okay.
So where is it being transferred from?
I believe it's unappropriated.
Unappropriated, yeah. All right, then I'll move to approve the force said budget transfer from unappropriated to.
A 9060 dot 0807.
Oh, second.
Thank you. All those in favor. All right. Anyone opposed?
Hold on a minute.
Next on the agenda is the adjustment for the Dutch Village.
Wait, there's another one. There's another one down there. The treasurer needs to amend the budget for the 2023-24 budget for $56,000 to purchase, to cover the cost of purchasing the fire truck, the fire.
New cheese vehicle.
New cheese vehicle.
Okay, so 40 of that is coming from fire equipment savings. Right?
Yeah, and the balance is going to come from the sale when they get the.
When they sell the.
Sell the other vehicle or whatever they're doing with that.
What's it, expedition, expedition.
I'll make the motion.
Second? All those in favor. All right. Anyone opposed?
All right, the next one is the bill adjustment for Dutch Village for meter 20 and 22. They were read incorrectly due to the meter size and there's.
The full provider and explanation there. Hopefully, that was a little more detail that we needed.
Awesome. Sixty-one.
Second?
All those in favor. Anyone opposed? And just for the record, that's $35,915.85 off the water bill and $13,609.7 off the sewer bill. And they are now going to do their meters correctly. With a photo.
But in addition, won't they have to down the road replace?
Yes.
The new meters.
Okay. Gary Douglas? We hired a new DPW worker, Gary Douglas, after interviewing four different individuals for the job. We selected Gary and so we need a motion to hire Gary Douglas as a DPW worker. He's a good guy, so you'll see.
I'll make a motion.
Second, all those in favor. Anyone opposed? So Matt, anything further as we consider the application or move this forward on 98 Menand Road?
Well, are we on that now?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the discussion about needing additional approval.
Sure.
I think I pretty much covered it, so.
Just go over the conditions.
Right, yeah, well, I mean, that.
Now, there's several. How long staff analysis and recommendation?
The process here, so the board has been provided a draft resolution to issue site plan approval with conditions. The breadth of the information is included on a notice of decision, which the village is going to start to use for all of their approvals. So that's included on the desk of all the board members. What this does is it goes through the entire project, project history, including the use and area variance that was issued by the ZBA. The ZBA served as lead agency for Seeker, issued a negative declaration, which means the village board is not responsible for this inquiry, that was addressed previously. Site plan application was submitted in June of this year, dated June 29, 2023, and Lobella Associates worked with the applicant through three review letters, with the October 27th review letter serving as the list of conditions that were required to comply with the conditional approval. So that is attached to the notice of decision. We've also attached the proceeding to project review letters, because there are other requirements that are identified, there just doesn't matter of cover the project. And we would be happy to, after tonight, pull all of that if you want and just have them as a separate list, so that you don't have to refer back to the letter. That's up to you. But we felt for ease, for tonight's purposes, that you should refer to that letter. So the notice of decision goes through all the information that the board has received, that we'll be reviewing, including all the supplemental requirements and references to the county's determination, which they had no, but required, referral to the town of Colony, which was done previously and ensuring that DOT permits and Department of Health permits would be obtained, which are included as part of the conditions. So the village board just needs to consider approval with conditions through the resolution that has been provided.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept as.
You want the resolution, right?
Tim, you want to hit?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Resolution of the Menand Village Board issuing site plan approval, applicant Franciscan Ministries, 98 Menand Road, XMPID 55 dot 5 dash 3 dash 6. Whereas the applicant Franciscan Ministries proposed a two-phase project on a 24.7 acre property at 98 Menand Road, referred to as the new community, as described in the detail in the attached notice of decision and hereinafter referred to as proposed project. And whereas the applicant submitted a site plan application with supporting documentation on June 29, 2023, and supplemental information on September 1, 2023, and October 6, 2023. And whereas the village board, open public hearing on August 21, 2023, continued, the public hearing until closing on November 6, 2023. And whereas the village board issued preliminary site plan approval on September 5, 2023. And whereas the village zoning board of appeals previously issued a negative declaration for proposed project on April 14, 2023, pursuant to the requirements of Seeker and approved by Use and Variants for the proposed project on June 1, 2023. Whereas the village board has reviewed the application, supplemental information provided against the requirements of previous Chapter 169 zoning and Chapter 8172 site plan review regulations has determined the application meets the requirements for approval with conditions as detailed in the attached notice of decision. Now therefore be resolved that the Menand Village Board hereby issue site plan approval for the Franciscan Ministries, the new community project as proposed, conditioned upon a satisfactory compliance with all conditions noticed in the attached notice of decision.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second, all those in favor. Anyone opposed? Amen. All right.
Thank you all.
You have a project.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. That's right.
See you later, Andy.
All right. All right, so next is 5056, a leave of connection. Able to discuss and decision?
Unless the applicant has anything else to say.
No, we have a few of those items checked off, but we don't have a whole thing.
Okay. Lauren and I will follow up with you guys this week, try to get that hammered out. Appreciate it.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed unless we reopen it. Okay, so.
And we table up to the 20th?
20th, yes. Next up is pre-site plan review for Pre-Oakland Ave, the Mohawk Hudson Humane Society.
It's up Dave Engel for the civil engineer. We prepared the site plans on behalf of the applicant. Ashley Baugh is also here from Mohawk Hudson.
Thank you so much. We're very excited to share our pre-site plans for the Mohawk Hudson Humane Society. As many of you know, we've been around since 1887 and have proudly resided at Pre-Oakland Ave since 1913. Our brand-new building is not as brand-new anymore, built in 2017, and we have some very exciting projects that we would like to discuss with everyone tonight.
Just give you a quick rundown of the project. Back in 2017, I believe it was, the new building was constructed, the new facility, which is outlined here, roughly 2,500 square feet. That was constructed brand-new, been in service since then.
Thousand?
Thirty-two thousand, sorry.
Yeah, two, thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. The proposed additions, the first one is what we're calling the Brock Center, which is a proposed 4,000 square foot addition on the north side of the building. That's basically for training and assessment, for behavioral review and rehabilitation. Ashley can explain more, others taking you through the site plan that she can, excuse me, taking you through the specifics of the site operations. She's out, she's not familiar with that. So the 4,000 square foot training assessment center on the north side, that would be phase one. Then there's some additional parking that's required, which is 16 additional spaces out toward Broadway, out toward the power lines going out the entrance here. With that, there's also a animal control officer intake condition, about 2,500 square feet, that's on the south side of the building. And then ultimately, phase three would be this bottle redemption up by DPW, about a 2,500 square foot new building, standalone building. With that, there would be some demolition of the existing structure, the existing, I guess this is your biggest holding crematory here. That would be demolished and there's 15 additional spaces that would be constructed for that. In terms of site plan aspects, the new addition would be treated, the stormwater would go out to the existing horse pavement. That's part, that was part of our original design. This was contemplated to be impervious. The two parking fields, the 16 spaces here, and ultimately the 15 down here, these will be constructed of horse pavement, so those will accept the stormwater into the pavement and then still be drained out the underdrains. Likewise, this building here, or the addition here, the 2,500 square foot animal control officer intake area, that would go out to the horse pavement as well. The new bottle redemption facility, phase three, that would be treated through fire retention area, one in the front, one in the back, to accept the runoff from the building and the pavement. In terms of all utilities, electric, that would be through the existing building for the two additions. There's existing water, existing sewer that would service those areas. The bottle facility, that would be serviced by new water and sewer connections to the village, existing buildings. That's pretty simple as that, two new additions, ultimately the bottle redemption.
Dave, can you talk about the timing on each of the different phases?
We just started speaking of that Friday. So phase one would be, I think as soon as they could get their approval, get their fundraising set and monetary budgets in place, maybe the next construction season would be the hopes for that. So get our approvals with the village, be ready to go spring, spring of 2024. I'm not sure on the other phases how fast, you know, the shelters think they've been raising the funding and get squared away.
I want more phase one, please.
This could, this could be built in one construction season. So if they started, got a reasonable spring, late spring start, they could, they could be completed for next fall. Speaking for your contractor.
Maybe I'll do it again?
It shouldn't be.
With the additional 16 parking spaces, is that the current grass lot located on Broadway? Or is that going to be further back?
It's further back, so currently, there are our behavior enrichment dog pens that are there. So it's not that upper lot. We still, we haven't, or we're not sure what we want to build up there, but it would not be a 4K lot.
Yeah, I apologize for the math here, there's a lot of lines and a lot of confusion. This is the right of way here, the power lines. Broadway's way up here.
Yes, that's.
So that's, yeah, so that's the existing parking area up there, so coming down through, just as you cross underneath the power lines, this would be the area that's, there's some existing grass area and dog pens over here currently.
So those, part of the first phase, those dog pens would get relocated onto the other side of the behavior center. It's actually probably a better location for them, because a lot of the dogs, you know, people are constantly coming down, they're dropping off bottles and cans, doing dog meets. It's quieter back over there, so it's probably much better for those dog pens to be over there. So that's part of the phase is to relocate those over there. And then the dog pens that are over here will be located to the front of the building. There's a green patch there, so in our budget, there will be a beautiful pet's cover fertile area, because in the wintertime, we want to make sure we can still continue dog meets outside.
Matt, do you have any concerns you'd like to?
No, just to update, we will have our first project review letter out tomorrow. We were a little delayed on Friday getting that out, I spoke a bit about that, Dan. And so we'll have that out, but we don't expect, you know, any real issues. This is an amendment to the existing site plan approval. And, you know, stormwater, speaking with Eric, who was involved in the previous review, he said that that's the biggest thing, as long as that can be addressed, that's fine. It is within 100 feet of the wetlands, that's a typical permit review. So we are anticipating issues there, so. But I will defer to the engineers, and once I see that letter tomorrow, we'll have a veteran standing. But I was, nothing was conveyed to me that was a concern today. I guess we would ask the board if there's anything we could accomplish.
Accomplish, I don't know if it's appropriate to do Seeker in terms of determining lead agency, or we just wait till the approval step for that?
Well, we can coordinate the Seeker at the next meeting. So this is a site plan review, so a public hearing is not required unless the village board feels one is necessary. And if that's the case, you know, that could be held in December. But again, that's up to the village board, you know, it's not, we don't feel there's a need for a public hearing. But I think that we could probably, again, once I get the letter from engineering, look at that, make sure there's no major outstanding issues, and I think we can move through this fairly quickly in consideration of preliminary site plan approval at the next village board meeting.
20th?
20th, 20th, and then move on to final in December. I'd have to, I think we have to send this to the county, I haven't looked yet, I'm not sure if it's within 500 feet of the state road, you're probably back.
It's probably, it's close, right? This is, we're 300 to here, so we're probably, I'll be racing, I think I'll worry you bad. We're probably going to rate out the 500 for line, I mean, if it's.
I'll check that tomorrow. They meet, I think, maybe later this month, so we'll be able to get that in. I'm pretty sure, if that's required, just get that out of the way.
Just in case.
Yeah, well, I'll be able to check to see if the referrals require hours.
I'll take a look as well.
Okay.
500 feet to a state highway or municipal boundary, so.
Yeah, municipal boundary, I think, here. Yeah, probably boundary, I think, here, probably quite a distance from that. But we'll do a measurement. We'll, we'll double-check and make sure that the timing for that, we can get that requested at the county. But that would be the only other timeframe that we'd have to coordinate, any, prior to, prior to the final decision, so.
Okay. Does the board have any concerns? So we're treating this as an amendment, an amendment to the previous site plan approval?
Yes.
So, and do we have to do, are we approving all of the changes in the three phases eventually? Or do we need to take them in turn?
No, we, we would approve the entire project.
All right. Does the board have any concern about having a public hearing or letting them proceed as guided by law?
I'm fine letting them proceed.
Yes.
All right, so Matt, next step is to provide a comment letter?
Yes, so we'll get that out to them tomorrow, and then if need be, we'll, we'll telephone or send a conversation with them to discuss any outstanding items or any concerns. And I think they'll be in good shape for preliminary site plan approval at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up is the introduction of a special use permit for 442 Broadway, the Moon Brothers Dispensary.
Yeah, sure. Well, we don't, yeah, we'll just talk basically. So my name is Nick Carr. This is my brother Ben. We're the founders of local, we are approaching the Village of Minnans, and the board for a special use permit to operate a dispensary out of 442 Broadway. It used to be the former Rite Aid Walgreens that maybe you probably know pretty well. We recently acquired the building. We did buy it from the prior owners, and we have approached the Village of Minnans to try to get a special use permit so that we can operate. We've done some preliminary detailed designs. We did get some updated survey, just to figure out how many parking spaces we would have, as well as property line delineations, making sure that we weren't near any flood areas, how far away we were from the closest local school, church, everything to meet the requirements of the Office of Cannabis Management Licensing Portal. And as far as the, this is kind of like the introductory piece, so I don't really know how far you want us to go as far as explaining or details or what you'd like us to do. But from the submission standpoint, this is the, the drawings we did also submit to meet the minimum requirements. We submitted building detail, sorry. So although it's kind of hard to see, basically, we redesigned this, redesigned the site to be the most secure possible site that it can be. We, we do operate a dispensary quite successfully in Pittsfield, Massachusetts already, which we bring operational expertise to the area. We are, I know the building is quite a large building. It's 10,200 square feet, but overall, we're actually looking to have about a 2,800-square-foot store with access to a drive-through, which New York does allow. And ultimately, just kind of making the site, bring it back to life. I know it's kind of been down for quite a while, ever since Crash Dropper left and everything. And our hope is that we can bring an incredible amount of tax revenue to the town and the village, as well as, you know, bring a lot of jobs here. We hope to hire about 30 or 40 people. That's kind of the plan. Local residents, local individuals, cannabis experience is not necessary. I know a lot of people are kind of scared of that, but our goal in Pittsfield was to become great members of the community, compliant, taxpayers, everything else. And it's the same goal up here. We want to create jobs, and we want to create unfounded tax burden for the village. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have, that the community members might have as far as instruction is concerned.
How long ago did you open in Pittsfield?
We opened in March 2020, so we opened right at the beginning of the pandemic. Literally, we opened up 13 days, the day before the governor shut us down. So pretty disappointing.
Did you go through a similar process, special use permit and so on?
So, a little bit different in Massachusetts, but a very similar process. You actually have to have a community outreach meeting in the state of Massachusetts, which is a little bit different, where you have to engage members of the community, answer a lot of questions. But in New York, as long as the village is on board, they allow, the state of New York allows you to get a license, but very similar, site plan, SBA, or ZDA, excuse me, not SBA, zoning board approvals, and then it turned into a special use permit grant, yeah.
And you, and you reviewed the requirements for the special use permit, you feel you can meet those requirements without any issue?
So the, the cannabis use-specific special use permit requirements are quite short in the bylaws, but we do meet all the requirements of your special use permit in order to qualify. We're in correct zoning district. We have all the appropriate setback requirements. As far as like, I've, I've seen some of the other special use permits that have been issued, you have a list of conditions, so I just don't know what that list of conditions is because it, it hasn't been issued up to this point for, for recreational use only.
Okay. I would suggest you review in any case.
Yeah, no, we, we did. And we had a lawyer, it was actually Andy left, but Andy was.
It's not orders. I don't think it's orders.
Sure, sure.
We would apply the same standard.
Yeah, standards, yeah.
Yep, standards would be applied, and we would happily agree to any standards that are required.
Knowing that we have another dispensary that's going to open, why do you feel we need another one in the village?
Um, so in Pittsfield, we are one of eight. Pittsfield has eight currently open and eight more set to open. As far as we are concerned, our customer base is actually from the capital district. We've got about 65,000 people that we've done business with in the state of Massachusetts, of which 70% or so are from the capital region. So we originally were looking everywhere. My brother Ben and my brother Nick actually have been on Broadway for quite a long time. So we were very familiar with the village when we approached them, hoping to come here. During the process, Joe did receive a license to open at 100 Broadway. We were under contract on this building for 20 months, so it's been quite a long time that we have been trying to work our way toward a license. And we feel that having a second dispensary, it may sound like a lot, but it, it will not be crowded. Ultimately, we are, we feel far enough away, 1.7 miles from the other licensed location, two exits on the highway, and we feel just based on our brand and based on the people that know us, we feel that it, it would be accomplishable in the village.
And just to add a little bit to that, also the type of environment that we create at our current operation, we, we try to have a very comfortable experience for any type of customer. We, you'd be shocked at the type of people that come to our store, the variety of people. Mainly, it's because of how personable of an experience it is, and how comfortable anyone feels, not only from an aesthetics perspective, but the way we train our staff members to be personable. Like you said, cannabis use means nothing to us in terms of the type of people we plan to employ. It's a lot about personality, the type of service you can bring to somebody. So we feel that our values as a company is really what's going to set us apart to be a successful business for Minnans.
Well, you do currently have a license in New York State, or you're working for?
So we've applied, we've applied for a license. We, the application window opened up on the 6th of October. We were license application number 15, as far as the state is concerned. They are going to be issuing preliminary final licenses as soon as the 16th of November.
So Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but a special use permit would only be issued if they did obtain a license with the state of New York, or which, which is it?
That would be a condition, obviously, so. Similar to 90 Broadway.
A license.
Seeing that, you'd have to file that. Your facility is a little bit bigger than 90 Broadway. You, do you anticipate lines? Are you, you expect that all the customers would be able to be?
Based on our occupancy that we can have in the building, we don't anticipate any lines. Our drive-through can probably fit about 10 cars at the, at this point. So if there's any lines, we anticipate it might be coming into the drive-through section. But we are working on ways to expedite that procedure, such as putting a camera right at the beginning of the building, so we can verify IDs. We're also requiring that to be preorder-only. So they'll already have to have their bags already set to the side, so when they show up, it's just verify their ID one more time, accept payment, and then be on their way. So we're expecting no more than a minute per car on average.
And there's also a reception area that's a manlock situation, where you kind of come into the building, and that can, based on capacity, I think our engineer committed 18 people, I think, could technically, 18 would never go in that room, but before they were into the sales floor and our processes, we operate in Massachusetts, you would come into the first area, you would get an ID verification to confirm that you're 21 years of age, then you would be allowed into the store. The store floor at 2,800 square feet could theoretically hold up to 15 people. So if, if we have a line, we would be blessed, but if, if more than likely, it's never going to happen.
What are you going to do with the rest of the building that you're not?
So that's operational space. So we, we plan on having two vaults to store products, temperature-controlled products and non-temperature-controlled products, operation center, really. We like, we like to run a very, very tight, efficient operation. So a big part of it is really just making sure that all of the conjoined areas are connected to the sales floor, for example. There's one relief hallway just for fire exits and everything else, but everything else is just operational space, three offices, conference table, you know, a conference room to meet with the staff and everything. And other than that, bathrooms can be accessible and, and, and we, we fill the space.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
The whole building will be.
It is occupied. Yep, it is utilized 100%. Our building in Massachusetts is 4,090 when you take the top and downstairs floor.
Yeah.
We're just basically doubling our footprint to make it, you know, that, better and more efficient for us.
Okay. And when you said the drive-through, are you going to utilize the facilities that were already left behind by Walgreens?
No, we're, we're going to gut the whole building. Yeah, there's really nothing that can be saved, you know, upgrading to the highest-end security, things like that, the way our operations work. We are going to utilize the footprint of the drive-through, you know, the same, the same turn, but we're, we're planning on bumping out the curb to make it less hazardous, you know, and, and make it more notable as to where you have to head. And then as far as the drive-through area, Walgreens operated with like a push-out, kind of like a door casing.
Yeah.
We're going to be turning that into more of like a Dunkin' Donuts style, where you kind of can open up the window, but it's open based off of verification of ID, payment, and everything else. So we'll be making some aesthetic changes, but that's going to be upon the issuance of a building permit. We've been working with Lyle and, and the village to, to follow the appropriate rules to get the permit.
And initially, I mean, we already thought there wouldn't be lines, but is there, if in case there were, is there the ability to go to like a Chick-fil-A style where someone comes out to you to utilize a second lane?
So, so there, there isn't enough room to really get a second lane of cars in there. The bus stop is right there, and you're kind of waited. We, what we planned on doing, right now, if you drive by the building, we park like a pod there. It's just one of like the storage spots where we've got some stuff from our Massachusetts place to put on there. We plan on making that curbside only, where if you were to pull up to the drive-through and say you did not have a preorder, you can pull right into one of those selected spots, and we're going to have a curbside style as long as the state of New York allows for it, where we can come curbside with your product, we can collect your payment right there, and then we can exchange your product and, and go back inside. So we don't anticipate, you know, the need for like a Chick-fil-A style, because you will have all your verification steps pre-done. So if you place a preorder on our site, you've already uploaded your ID. We then, once you arrive, we then verify it and, and make sure they match for who's picked up.
And just to comment, how we were open during the pandemic, we were required to do that in Massachusetts. So we had experience already adjusting on the flyer procedures, incorporating a curbside style if needed.
You only operate one location in Pittsfield?
Yeah, one in Pittsfield right now. Yep, it's kind of hard to be in two places at once. So there's four of us total that are owners. They're both on the call. My brother Nick is on the call, as well as my wife, who's the four owners. They just couldn't make it tonight, unfortunately, but we do plan on splitting our time between Massachusetts and, and New York, so one of us is always going to be present.
Explaining the security measures, where you have cameras on the exterior of the building?
Yeah, 42 total cameras is what the number was called for by the local firm that we fired. So there'll be 42 total cameras. On the outside, I believe there's a total of nine. There, the one requirement of the state board is you cannot have a blind spot, whether it be outside or inside, anywhere in the building. So we will follow the strictest requirements of the OCM, and then we will, yep, there will be cameras. They will point in every direction of where a car can go, where a customer can walk, a non-customer can walk. And those, those cameras are monitored 24/7, 365. They're, they're never off. They never go off.
The police department will require you signing an agreement to turn over all video?
Absolutely. Yep, we've assisted the police department in Pittsfield probably 20 or 30 times.
Do you have any, maybe you could explain how, how this happens at Pittsfield, but how do you address any loitering?
Yeah, we don't allow, you're, you're, when you come to the dispensary, I, I mean, it's in the kindest way. You're there to shop and have an experience, then you're, you're there to go to the next location, wherever you're heading. So New York does not have a mandatory security requirement, where you have to have like a security guard or an unarmed armed guard sitting there. But because our cameras do monitor everywhere around our building, we always are watching the cameras, you know, whether it be inside. So if we notice somebody loitering, we approach them in the most respectful way possible, and let them know this is just not the spot for it. You can move on, you can move down the road, you can go wherever else, but it's, it's not here.
Yeah, and in terms of the location of the building, we are close to a bus stop, so there is, you know, a differentiation between you at the bus stop versus our building. Regardless, we'll still have camera coverage there, especially if people are, you know, using our product in an unlawful way, which is something we'll be monitoring in our parking lot. Outside of that, if loitering ever became an issue, we had a security guard at our facility for two-plus years, so we're willing to contract that out as well, work with the village for whatever the needs that come up are.
So the next step, Matt, would be to set this down for a public hearing if the board so chooses? Is that right?
Yes.
Can we do it as, as soon as the 20th?
You can do it either.
Sure.
20th. Short and great. I move to set this, set a public hearing for Monday, November 20th.
We'll be here. That's it. We'll have a post-op. Yeah, well. Yeah, that'd be great. It was kind of hard to know, like, I, I did review the special use permit. It's just, it was, we didn't have any back and forth. It was, I know it's kind of late.
Yeah, we get your submission.
Yep. Yep. Anything that's missing, we'll get to you immediately. Yep, we'll get you in touch with you after. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Hold on, I'll need a second. All those a favor.
All right.
Any opposed? Public hearing is set for Monday, November 20th. See you guys then.
See you guys then. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Number 11, discuss migration. Hey, Brian. How are you? So this is a discussed. So this is a further continuation of a conversation regarding migrating to the Microsoft 365 platform. Brian, you want to explain kind of what, what the differences are between where we are and, and why we should consider moving to Microsoft or 365?
Right, so currently you guys are part of the Google.
Do we have, may I come to order here? Thank you.
Currently, the village has a Google platform, so Google Sheets, Google Drive, and mainly Google Gmail for location. And we've been approached by the mayor and Dottie to look at using Microsoft, their, Microsoft Government Cloud Platform, Microsoft GCC environments, which is used by a lot of other municipalities in the area. So Microsoft's platform, which you guys already have currently a subscription for Microsoft Office, this would include Microsoft Office as well as Microsoft email, or Microsoft Exchange it's called, Microsoft Teams, and Microsoft SharePoint. So it kind of brings all those platforms together as opposed to what you have now, which is Word and Excel for Word document and Excel spreadsheet creation, and Google email, which are kind of separate, kind of.
And Google email, which are kind of separate, kind of bringing it into one platform to manage all the, all those sort of resources for the, for the village. So part of this proposal, we've revised some of the, uh, components. We've reduced the labor, removed a additional Barracuda piece of software. And so we have a new, uh, revised licensing line item and installation line item. I've also kind of provided the, what the future spend would be compared to what the current spend. So currently you're for Microsoft, it's in the Microsoft Office licensing and the Google that you, that you have now, it's about $6,200. So that would go to about $7,000 for Microsoft. And the Barracuda platform that you have today would stay as is, you know, the, the difference from where we were last time.
Would, uh, I know you had said that the Chromebooks would be usable with this, uh, platform. Would those with Chromebooks be able to access the software, the, um, uh, Word, Excel?
Right. So similar to, correct, when someone logs in, if you sign in with your set account.
Yeah.
To with your Microsoft username, Microsoft password, you'd have access to all of the, with, with your license, you'd have access to all the web-based versions of Word, Excel, documents, SharePoint for, uh, you know, collaboration as well as Microsoft Teams. You'd have all that from a web-based portal.
Okay. But, um, didn't you say we would, uh, still have to log into Google and then log into?
To sign into a Chromebook, you'd still need a Google account, but all of the resources that you'd have would be stored in Microsoft.
Yeah. If the, um, Chromebooks, uh, you know, I think this is a old generation, uh, Chromebook. If we're told that there's no more, um, updates available for it, is that, is that a Google thing or is that?
That's a Google thing, of course. So there's a, there's a Chrome limitation for, based on that type of hardware, they only support certain versions of Chrome.
Oh, okay. So, but is there an override where instead it could run the, uh, Microsoft 365 instead of?
So the operating system that's on like that Chromebook is Chrome. I can't change that. That's on the, that's on the hardware. So, yeah, this is really just the, once you sign in, what the website that you log into will be Microsoft's portal, Microsoft Cloud.
Is there an advantage? Cause I, I know that Chromebooks, when we got them, were not terribly expensive. Would there be a, an advantage to getting the, what were they called? Lasers?
Uh, surfaces, I think is what you're talking about. Yeah.
So it's like the Microsoft.
Microsoft, the Microsoft equivalent. Yeah. They, that is, we could certainly do that. Uh, Microsoft surfaces are a little more expensive than say a, a $250 Chromebook. Um, it would eliminate the need for a Chrome or a Google sign in. That's one idea, and you can sign in with your Microsoft account. Um, so it would be a little more, a little easier to use in that sense. It's just, we could certainly, uh, look at, right, using going down to a, a Microsoft surface, that would work.
Is there a, a cost? Cause you said at first we'd have to log into, to Google and this, this would, um, eliminate the need for a Google account. Is there a cost going forward to Google for us keeping that?
If you're going to keep the Google tenant, then yes. And if you want to just be able to sign into your Chromebook, you can get a free Google account. Again, probably don't want to have a lot of stuff in that free Google account, but we're trying to get away and also save the cost of having, not paying, pay for Google at the same time. So yes, I would, I would potentially look at trying to move that to Microsoft.
So future, um, hardware, uh, and like what would, um, what did you say surfaces called?
Surface. Yeah. There, there's other manufacturers out there that do.
We can look into that, plan that as a future capital purchase down the road. When ones become available, uh, we could apply for a grant, I think, for that.
What would one of those, just ballpark, what would one of those?
Probably talking $700 or something.
Oh, oh, that much? Okay.
Yeah.
I thought they'd be one that, you know, don't run.
Microsoft, yeah, they, they will make them cheaper, unfortunately.
Can you talk about the differences security wise for the village between the Microsoft 365 platform and the Google platform? And some of the enhancements that we've been making, uh, to the village for security? And that's kind of how this conversation developed. Let me just elaborate on that.
Yeah. So we would be tying, uh, from authentication perspective, trying to tie together multi-factor authentication. And for the village employees, making sure that they're signing in with a, you know, one username, one password. And then that, that credential then follows them into, into Microsoft. Uh, we'd also make sure that all the multi-factor authentication is, is turned on. Um, and I think from a, from a security perspective, I think Microsoft has a good platform for making sure that, that you require multi-factor authentication. We know who you are to assign into your resources. Um, and I think that's a, we're also going to be tying this in with moving to the manasny.gov domain name to kind of make this part of the manas government going forward.
I just want to clarify, it's Google terms of June to June. So we've already paid that for this year. So you're saying?
They pay for the whole year, right? Yeah.
So are we looking to in June when that expires or we're going to double pay from January to June to have two services?
So I think what we talked about was doing this sometime in the spring so that we had like two months of overlap. While one replaced the other and then cutting over. But you're absolutely right. There's, that was part of why we delayed the initial conversation on this. Was because, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no refunding any portion, portion of that subscription.
No.
So that was something that we looked into to see if they would refund any of the, okay? And that's why we, we decided to, to take a look at this for after we implement and manasny.gov, uh, to migrating, um, so that we don't have that overlap except for enough time to make sure that they're running parallel and we capture everything.
Which takes approximately.
About two months. Yes, a reasonable time. Correct.
And then this, the migration fees, that includes the yearly fee for the Microsoft or the $7,000 would be on top of this?
The $7,000 is, yeah, the top number is basically a $7,000 number. Um.
So it's included?
It's included. Yes, it's not a top number. Correct. It's included.
So on proposal, uh, 4833, it says ABS land labor 145.
Correct.
At 5072, is that essentially just what's being transferred over and that's the rate you came up with?
That's the number of hours, labor hours essentially to perform the migration.
And just correct me if I'm wrong, but when we talked about this, that was, that was like a, that was like a average number.
It's not, it's not a specific number.
If we don't need that much going through stuff.
If you use 60 hours rather than 72, that's egregious.
Exactly.
But we won't go over 72.
You have to throw a number in there. So, so.
Yeah. And you're right. Based on other migrations of a similar size, similar number of users, we've kind of, we've done this a couple, a couple of times. So yes.
You expect it to be 72 hours or?
Um, I'm hopeful it'll come in less than that. A lot of times it comes down to the number of folks that need help with their iPhones and other devices, which sometimes just take a little bit to work on.
And then can you talk about, one of the things that we talked about was, uh, making sure that all the documents get sucked over so that there was nothing?
Yeah. So part of the $9,000 number is our migration software. Uh, it's a product called BitTighten. Uh, we've used it with a variety of other, uh, organizations, but it essentially reaches into your Google Drives and, and brings out the documents, sheets, all the files that are in each of your Google Drives, brings them over to Microsoft. And then we have a report at the end that basically says, yes, there were 425 documents there and there's 425 documents on the destination side. So we know that it's, it's migrated correctly.
And then if this project starts, you can determine what, from a certain point?
Right.
And then not pull over anything after that point. So just the new stuff?
Uh, correct. We would also, I think we'd also talk to one point where if there is some users either email or documents that we don't want, they're super old stuff. We can say only grab things from the last two years of forward. But you're right. If there's something where we start a migration, say we started in March 1st, copies the oldest stuff initially, and then on cut over day, it copies the last week or last bits. Exactly. So it's just, it's going to take time to suck over all that files and emails that they flip out over that have been stored in Google land for several years at this point.
Okay. And from what I understand, Don, um, s- some of these expenses are ARPA eligible?
Yes. So if any hardware, anything that's not a subscription will be ARPA group.
So the, the setup?
Setup and all that could be, we could use ARPA.
But the licensing is not?
Licensing's not.
Okay. Does that make sense?
So there's $1,700, though.
Whatever, whatever the migration and installation and all that stuff, that's all covered, that could be covered by ARPA. But like the, the actual 365 license has to be come out of the budget.
All right. So that's where we're at with that. And so, so if the board was to grant approval tonight, we would start talking about a cut over sometime February or March?
You're, and yeah, so we'd want to, we'd want to have the entire process done. Let's just say May, right? That gives you in case we need to keep the Google tenor for June. So if we, if we work from May, then yeah, I'd say we want to start the process in March.
And so then conversation with Bill, like where this $9,000 is going to come from?
Yeah. So I think while we do this, why don't we, as long as we have Brian's questions answered about the process and we can, if, if we feel it's appropriate, we can talk to Bill about exactly where the funds come from. Um, and then, and then have an additional conversation. And if we, that sounds fair.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
I have to look, I don't think the, uh, the lasers are going to be, the surfaces are going to be as expensive as you'd think. They have some that are, you know, in the 200s. Yeah, the tablets.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next is a continued discussion about the advisory candidate board for fusion recovery. Um, we've kind of been kicking around some, some names. I had a good meeting with Steve, um, and talked about, uh, Steve joining that, that, uh, you know, that, that group considering his long experience in this space. So I would like to advance that name. Um, I also strongly suggested Jody Havenger, um, a- as a potential candidate. Um, at board, have any comments about anyone further that we've discussed?
I've sent some of this stuff to the others to see if they, like their time will allow. So I'm just waiting.
Ms. Chrome, is it?
Amisha.
Yeah. Um, I, I, if you can try and get her on board, I think she would be a good, good.
Yeah. So she was just waiting to see what the time commit went.
What was, so what was the time coming, which is like probably one hour?
So it's quarterly, it's quarterly for an hour.
Yeah, quarterly, in person.
Okay. So we want to continue working on that? All right.
I'd still like to be considered.
Wonderful. Thank you, Cindy. Um, we'll have that ready for the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Sounds good. We'll move on from that. Um, last meeting, we had a conversation about Solar Simplified as a marketing partner to encourage our visit, village residents to, subscribe for solar power as one of our energy initiatives. Uh, we're talking about some of the marketing stuff that they did for other municipalities that was included in our blood packet. Um, so, uh, Steve, I believe Steve has reviewed the contract or will review the contracts uh, between municipalities. Did we go over that yet? Steve?
This is which contract, which?
The Solar Simplified contract, uh, service agreement contract. I can't, I don't think we do. So, so I think that we're still need to, uh, just figure out if there was any concerns about that agreement.
Your, the, your, uh, the audio is, is coming in and out.
Okay. That's the.
There you go.
Community solar municipal services agreement. Um.
I had looked at, yes, I, I've looked at this. This is what we discussed at the last meeting that was going to be offered to the residents, correct?
Yeah. Yep. So it's an opt-in for the individual residents. Sasha's on the call here, uh, again, to answer any questions that anyone has. Basically Sasha, the, the reward for each signup for the village is what?
Uh, it's $50 per enrollment within the municipality.
And your, uh, participation rate from one of your previous, uh, projects, Orange Town, was it?
So, uh, yeah, so Orange Town is, uh, our largest municipality that we work with. It's about 50,000 residents. Uh, we did one, uh, mail campaign there and we had, um, close to a thousand enrollments, uh, there. So that's, um, from the households, uh, it's roughly 7% of, uh, all households within the municipality enrolled. Based on our extensive, uh, experience of working with municipalities, that number ranges from four to 17. Um, so yeah, so that's, that's kind of the range.
Four to 17%?
Yes.
Okay. Um, does.
Now you said you did one mailing. Is that the only mailing you do? Or I just, my fear is that we're then going to bombard our residents with things in their mouth.
That's a great question. So we don't do any marketing that is not specifically approved by the municipality. So, uh, so yeah, so typically we do two mailers, uh, you know, a couple of weeks apart. You know, some people miss a mailer, so they might see the second one. Uh, but yeah, in, in Orange Town, for example, we did one mailer and we oversubscribed the entire project. Uh, and so in just one swoop, typically we do a couple, but yeah, that's about it.
So we can set the maximum number of mailings?
And then get a group expiration.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. And also just to add, uh, all language verbiage, everything would be, uh, seen, uh, reviewed and approved uh, by the municipality before anything goes out.
Does anyone have anything else on there? So, uh, we get a motion to work with Solar Simplified.
I move to approve the, uh, contract with, um, Solar Simplified.
Hold on a second. All those a favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you, Sasha. I'll talk to you soon about, uh,
Absolutely. I'll follow up with next steps. Thanks so much.
Sounds good.
Brian?
Yeah.
Can we skip to the work page? It's Sean's on there.
Okay.
So he's, so he's next up.
Okay.
It's next up here.
Uh, so we're going to number 16, 17, whichever.
Question regarding revamping the website.
So, uh, the last time, Sean, you want to take it away and talk about our website and what we've been talking about?
Sure. Um, hello everyone. Uh, Sean Mahoney from Next Step Digital. Uh, my company has been the vendor for the Village of Manants, uh, for many years, uh, I believe since 2014. Um, so the website is, is very well used, uh, on the Village of Manants. Um, we work already very closely with Don and Nicole and Cheryl and the mayor. Um, where we're at is basically the website is built on WordPress. And if you're familiar with WordPress, WordPress is a content management system. And while there has been some functionality upgrades done over the years, uh, it's sort of time for what we call a re-theme and to utilize some of the latest and greatest pieces of functionality that are available to, uh, anyone that uses WordPress. Uh, WordPress is an open source content management system that's very easy to use and add functionality. Uh, however, the website is very large. Uh, there are thousands of pieces of content, many hundreds of pages. Um, and all of that needs to be touched. So I've worked with the mayor also on developing sort of a, a new streamlined look um, for the website, uh, which the mayor, uh, and Don have seen. Um, and what I'm asking for is approval to essentially move forward and develop the, the new website to, to match that look and feel. Um, but also bring some additional functionality that is, uh, very much needed.
So, um, one of the things that we started to talk about was, uh, we started looking at some websites that were interactive and were in the right direction. And one of those websites that, uh, was really, uh, along the lines of what we wanted to look like was, uh, a city of water holes. Uh, so I reached out to Charlie Patricelli and had a good conversation with him. And basically, uh, he had agreed to give us, uh, the, the architecture. Is that the right word, Sean?
Uh, yes. Yep. That's true.
To prevent us from having to start from scratch. Um, and so one of the proposals for Sean to do is to import what we have and kind of align it with what the website looks like for the city of water hole. Um, so that's kind of the, the gist of what we're.
The overall goal, just to make it, to simplify it, decent streamlined it, but, um.
Sean, do you want to talk about some of that stuff?
Sure. So, you know, some of the content, uh, you know, we've, we've accumulated years of content. Um, and part of it is to sort of reorganize and I can give you sort of a sneak peek of where we're at with the overall design. I don't know if you can see my screen at this point in time.
Yep. I see you. Yep.
Yes. So if you can see that, uh, you can see that the navigation itself has been, uh, streamlined and sort of, uh, abbreviated. So all of the content that. So all of the content that exists now needs to move into the, its new home. So ultimately, the goal here is to make it easier for residents and any other website visitor to find the information that they need. So this is an organizational process as much as it is a redesign and some additional functionality as well. Also, you know, with, with older websites, they typically, you know, they, they tend to have some security holes. So the best way to ensure that, we also have some additional security protocols in place, but is to, to use the up-to-date software available from WordPress. So on many levels, it's the right thing to do.
So Sean, can you, can you go down a little bit to some of the dynamic sections of the? So for instance, calendar items are automatically loaded from the Manants master calendar. Any videos would be in the middle section? Is that?
Yeah, or Facebook feed. Yep, absolutely. We did discuss having, since your meetings are, are recorded on video, is that building out a section that would have the meeting archive available on video, which is currently not? Uh, we talked about a business directory. We talked about revising the business directory.
Okay, so do we, Don, do we have a?
I'll have to call them.
Okay.
So do you have the poll with there by chance?
I do. I do. So the full quote for everything, we estimate it to be about 170 hours or $16,150. If we were to add no additional functionality, like speaking about the video section and the business directory, et cetera, essentially just doing the re-theme itself, we're at about 11,400. And just so that you understand the timeframe, this would take, we, we believe between eight to 12 weeks. I would also coincide with the former topic of, with your .gov domain name. So the idea being that, you know, we would get that and then launch this on the new .gov domain name, as well as redirecting the existing website traffic to the, the .gov.
Okay, so eight to 12 weeks to pull everything over and have it ready to launch? Is that, is that right, Sean?
Yes, yes. You know, assuming timely turnarounds.
Okay, so, and, and the, when, when you're talking about the quotes for that, for that hour, is that, is that not to exceed similar to what we just discussed with Brian?
It's a fixed price scope on, on the, yes, it's a fixed price scope.
Okay. Are we required to get this one close to this? Or just one? Since, uh, I don't know the question. Steve? Are we required to bid this or since they're our provider?
Yeah, this might, this would fall under.
Specialized service?
Yeah. Let me just take a quick look, because I, I have the policy here.
Yeah. I mean, there's the, the, I think there'd be some additional time required for a new person to come in and see what we have. Sean's been working with it for so long.
That's a huge number. You just threw out a huge number. You're talking to somebody that does this for a living. And I, I would suggest she get closed. I have no interest in you, but I think you should get.
Okay.
Yep. Just quickly, just say that the current procurement policy, purchase contracts under 20,000. These are exemptions from the competitive bidding. Purchase contracts under 20,000. Let me see. There is also the, the carve-out for professional services as well. So that would afford you, I mean, it, it's discretionary with the village, but it's not absolutely necessary to bid this. Especially considering the relationship that you have.
Yeah, I mean. Just take your quotes. All right, why don't we?
I mean, the last three minutes you talked about spending like $30,000.
I mean, if they can get lower quotes, then they will come back and probably be lower as well. So I think we should get close.
Yeah.
So, so it says professional services, this is an exemption. Professional services or services requiring special or technical skill, training or expertise. Company must be chosen based on accountability, reliability, responsibility, skill, education, et cetera.
Commodities are not against.
I mean, I, I would just add that we work with the village staff every single day. You know, we, we get multiple requests and we, we turn that around usually within the hour. So all I would say is that essentially, you know, we're not new and that we have become trusted and reliable partners to the Village of Manants for many years.
A personal relationship is, is also one of the, one of the qualifiers for this. As well as computer software or programming services for customized programs. That's specifically in, which is an exemption from the bidding, competitive bidding process. That is specifically in your procurement policy.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
You said that our website is highly active. Can you tell me how many views a week we're getting?
I can. Uh, just give me a second to pull that up.
I think the board, while we're, we're looking for that, I think we're in agreement to table this.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so. Don, put that on for the 20th. We'll get some additional information. We could eventually reach out to another, you know, somebody else to see where we should fall within the scope and contract.
Yeah.
But in looking through the City of Water leak page, it looks good. I like the style. Like how it operates, I feel, so. See, you can do that.
Uh, payroll, well. Don, should we? Where's Brandon going to fit into this?
I don't know where I am. I thought he was supposed to be here.
You didn't know he was?
You could, you didn't bill, so he's, he's supposed to be here.
Okay.
Probably not.
He's not on the agenda.
Well, he's on the agenda, so it's there, so. Where is it? Upstate New York Temple H?
No, he's not on the agenda. All right, we'll do, we'll, we'll wait, we'll wait for Sean.
It's a, so, so you've got 2.8,000, you know, about 2,800 users, unique users in the last 30 days.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sean. We'll, we'll, we'll talk soon and we'll, we'll, we'll get back to you in the next steps.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. How about we, we talk about the account or the payroll system?
Yep.
And then we'll go to Brandon. Okay. All right, so our current payroll system is paychecks and it's been
A nightmare.
A nightmare, to say the least. It's also expensive. Uh, so we looked into two different vendors in addition to paychecks, Paylocity and a company that was recommended to us by the town or the Village of Roysville, which uses this company called AccuData. The demo that they did for AccuData was amazing.
It is a lot better. And one of the things, one of the problems that we have right now with paychecks is we have to do a report that has to be submitted every month for everybody's pay for nicelers for the New York State retirement. Cheryl literally spends three days going through all this stuff. They will automatically print out a report af- after we pay her and have it done. We don't have to, she doesn't have to sit there. So you got the price of the pro, of the payroll service, but you also have Cheryl's time that you, which you could be doing other things, you know?
Of course.
And.
In addition, it's half the price.
It's half the, it's.
Half the price of paychecks? Yeah. Wow.
Price, right now, we're currently paying 15,4175. It'll be 754.90 a month. But I just see, just to be, be off the front with everybody, Paylocity was cheaper, but they, they don't have the integration. They're not a gold star people with nicelers to get the retirement reports that we need.
Okay, and they charged a upfront fee of $3,000?
Yeah. It was something, it was something, it was like a, it was like a, it was like.
Setup fee of like three grand.
Did they, did you have any demo from Travelocity?
Yes.
Okay, Paylocity, yes.
Yeah, we've had, we've, and it's similar to paychecks. Actually, the Paylocity owner used to work for paychecks.
Yeah.
And I thought they're very, very, very similar. Where's AccuData at, are they? Long Island.
So it's a New York-based company.
Paychex is Tom Galasano's company.
Oh, yeah.
The former Uber Notorial candidate.
Uh, so Cheryl would be thrilled if we approved a new contract to start over what we've cut in over January and saving our payroll expense. So.
You're hoping for approval?
Yep, hoping for a motion to sign a service agreement and select AccuData as our new payroll service start in January.
I, I move to sign the contract with AccuData and to begin in January, that's 2024.
Hold on a second, a motion? All those in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Let's go to Brandon. Okay.
Well, I didn't see you there, Brian, sorry.
I was wondering, I thought you were just here observing, seeing what's going on in the village.
Right. So we've been, we've been talking about health insurance for our village employees. And do you want to kind of start as to where we are?
Yeah, I mean, however you want to.
Yeah.
Because I, I mean, I have the same documents we've reviewed, if you want to.
So basically, let's start with the, the current plan that we offer to all village employees except for the Teamsters. So that TPW was going up 14.6%.
13.6.
13.6%. And
Thank you.
Other similar plans were even higher. So the question came up, how do we? How do we manage that?
Correct.
And so we've came up with some creative solutions that we think actually may benefit a majority of our employees. So you want to take it away?
Sure. So this chart is, I'm Brandon with Employee Benefit Center. We've been, you know, helping the village with their group benefits, health, dental and vision for a number of years. So this chart shows the current CD PHP Platinum Plan you've been using for a couple of years now. And it shows the renewal rate for 2024, along with a number of alternatives that are comparable from other insurance carriers. So, you know, in the capital district, CD PHP has been popular, but MVP, Time Mark, Empire, there's a bunch of others. But we shop around. The village has less than 100 employees, so it's a small group. Anything less than 100 employees in New York State is a small group market. The plans are the same price, no matter where you go to buy them. So we show everything that's out there and try to help businesses and municipalities make good choices. So this chart shows what it would look like if we kept it the same.
That's option one.
That's option one, and then some alternatives. The idea, you know, from conversations we had leading up to this meeting, you know, what are their alternatives, what are their businesses doing to control these costs? Plans have been going up and up and at some point, people started tapping out and looking for alternatives. You know, taking on deductibles, you can, you can save money on health insurance, you just buy less of it. But we'd all be out of a job pretty quick because there'd be uproars and people wouldn't like having less coverage. So a way to manage that is to take on something with a deductible, a plan with a, with a deductible, but offset that cost for the employees with what's called the health reimbursement arrangement, so an HRA. So we would set it up that the village pays the deductible for the employees. So the village saves on premium by buying a, a gold level plan. But as planes come in, the village would be paying those planes for the employees.
Can you talk about those two thresholds that we talked about for the single employee and spouse? And how that would work with the, with the incentive?
So this is a second chart. It shows how the HRA, the numbers for the HRA and how it would work. So basically, the gold plan we'd be looking at is still CD PHP, it's still the same national EPO network. So there'd be no disruption in networks. Doctors, facilities, everything would stay the same as far as what current employees are using with a new plan. The gold plan is a $1,600 individual deductible and a $3,200 family deductible. So the village would commit to paying the gold deductibles for the employees. Once the deductibles are satisfied, the employees would be paying their copays the same as they're paying now with the Platinum Plan. It's just while they're in the deductible phase, the village would be picking up the cost of their care. Prescriptions, doctor's visits, any kind of other medical services that they.
Or one of the things that we talked about was, A, it keeps the provider the same, which is really important to the employees.
Yes.
To say, let's CD PHP. And then, and then basically, how do we make up for, so they'll be paying slightly less for their premium, right?
Sure, because there's a cost share. The employees are paying a percentage. So we're paying, we're talking about a smaller overall premium compared to what it would be on the Platinum Plan. So the employees would pay less.
Yeah.
Because there's whatever the percentage is, is of a smaller number. So the village would be paying less in premium. And even if, this chart shows these two options on the left, we pick two, one silver, one gold. I don't think the silver is a, is a natural transition from where you are, just because the copays are higher at the silver level. But the gold is very comparable copays.
So just as an example, just as an example on how we, if, if they go to see a specialist with the platinum, if we kept that, they pay $35, right? If we go to the gold, the copay is $20, but the village would pay that as part of their deductible.
Well, not yet, kind of. I mean, the, 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 the copay would apply after the deductible.
So we're paying the deductible, then they're paying, they're paying the higher copay, but?
No, they would just, they would pay the copay once the deductible is satisfied.
We're contributing that $1,600.
Correct.
Right, so, so they get reimbursed that $20.
No, the, the $20 would apply, that'd be once the deductible is satisfied.
Got it.
So they would pay, so that if they go to a doctor's specialist visit, it's a $300 doctor's visit, that would come out of the deductible. That would be, not applied towards the deductible in the beginning part of the year. The village would be paying that full amount. But once the, for an individual enrollee, once they get the $1,600, then those $20 copays would apply. Then the, the employees would pay those copays after the deductible.
So, so we, we, we are through the deductible and once they, they met the deductible, they're responsible for the remainder of the copays.
Okay, just as they are with day one with the Platinum Plan now.
Okay.
So in the beginning phase of the year, the employees won't have out-of-pocket costs until their deductible is satisfied.
And that's only if they're going to a lot of appointments.
Yeah, it depends on how much they use, but if they're minimal users of their coverage, then they could be in a deductible phase of the year.
Isn't it always?
We're all trying to do.
But the difference in a lot of these copays between the platinum and the gold is very minor. I mean, urgent care is 60 to 65, ER is 100 to 150, inpatient is actually less.
Good.
An X-ray goes down to 20, so the, the prescriptions are from four to 10.
So when all is said and done with, with that, once we cover up. So when all is said and done with, with that, once we cover up through the deductible, um, are we, uh, do we have an estimate of what the? Cost difference is going to be? Is it this five, five and a half or five point two percent?
That five point two is just raw premium.
Premium, okay.
But you're talking about if. The deductible. Came out the deductible.
Our cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to know.
Sure, so. On the left, the smaller. Smaller, on the right, excuse me, the smaller box there shows the difference in premium. Per month, for each plan, we're, we're looking at that option two, gold two twenty-five.
Yeah.
So the premium difference for an individual, for example, is a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month.
Yeah.
Which is twenty-one hundred dollars per year. So you're on the hook for sixteen hundred dollars worth of deductible, but you're saving twenty-one hundred dollars in premium, so. Hmm, even if you max out, that everybody maxes the deductible, it's still lower overall cost for the village.
Five hundred dollars. That's still a high quality. CDPHP plan.
Yes.
Absolutely, yes. I mean, it's a gold plan, the employees have effectively no deductible, it's just. In the beginning, the HRA will be paying. The deductible for the employees, and then once that money is. Exhausted, the employees will be on the hook for their own normal copays. We have these arrangements going with many clients around the region and. It works great, the numbers work great, in this case, moving from a Platinum Plan to a Gold.
So just for some timing, we need to make a decision by next meeting in order to have the deduction start for December.
We have to start the deduction by December.
So that everybody.
And we pay them one ahead of time.
Right, so that everybody's covered.
So it should need to be made at the next meeting.
That's correct.
Yeah, I just like that, like, I think we need to have a conversation, Bill, about how we budget for this too, because it's like. Unexpected expenses with these deductibles versus just paying it, knowing this amount every month.
Are we gonna have to keep transferring funds for that?
I get it's less money in the long run.
No, but, no, but it's less, but it's.
So.
The overall, because he goes by. What everybody's plans are, and takes that and then. Puts that in, because he hasn't even started the other project, so he'll, he'll do that.
So to answer your question. Bill budgeted. For starting January one, a ten percent increase.
Okay, I see.
So.
To be moved to that account.
Correct, correct.
And if we do this, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of five point two percent.
It's, it's rough, well, after we play, after we pay, even if we pay.
Yeah.
All the maxed out deductibles. We will be about a wash. Is that right?
It's, it's less than what you would be paying on Platinum.
Right. So it's actually less money.
So if, if you kept everything, if you kept everything the same on the Platinum Plan. The transition to the gold with the HRA is, is less than what you would have paid. Just even if everybody uses all of the HRA, which. Most of our clients are in a thirty to forty percent utilization rate.
And how does the process work with the billing side of it? So like, say, I. And I play at the village, I go to the doctor, it's going to cost three hundred dollars, do I have to pay that upfront and then be reimbursed by the village? How does that?
So. At, at, at a doctor's office or at a facility, the employee goes, they have their visit, and they leave, they don't pay anything at the time of visit. Once that claim is submitted to CDPHB, CDPHB sees that there's an HRA, and whatever. Funds applied towards your deductible are automatically sent to that doctor's office. For the employee, so. It's linked to a bank account that the village has, and it pulls funds as needed throughout the year. If you go to a pharmacy, there's a debit card linked to the HRA, and you just swipe the debit card at the pharmacy and. The funds come out of the HRA.
Brandon handles anything that, uh.
I'll be on call for any questions or issues throughout the year.
So they're gonna have a special debit card for the pharmaceutical?
Correct.
We did this years ago, years ago, we had, we did that.
For Empire, wasn't it?
I forget which, it was.
Was it Empire?
No.
I mean, not in the last. Three years.
No, no, it wasn't, it was, it was either MVP or. I think it was either MVP or CDPHB, one of those two, because it was, we did it. Well, it was dispatching at the time.
Could have been premium, but, um.
I think it was MVP that we did it with.
It works well, I mean, there's an education component with the employees, just to make sure they're up to speed on the process, but. I mean, they've been good on other issues that come up throughout the year, they call me, they email, Cheryl sends me stuff, Bill sends me stuff, Dawn does. As things come up, and we handle it, so.
And tomorrow, tomorrow we have a, an appointment with, uh, the PBA to talk about some details. Yeah, Brandon, right? So we'll table this. Continue conversation on the twentieth. Thank you, Brandon.
Well.
Thank you.
Obviously.
Sounds good.
Okay, uh. We need to go to LoSAP.
Yes.
And standard, standard work week.
Standard work week, um. Cheryl, I went to a training thing and. We had, we have it somewhere in the past, we've done this, but. We can't locate the paperwork, we have to show that we have the paperwork. Uh, all this is, is a standard workday. For each position that we have. Um, it excludes the, the trustees, well, that doesn't exclude them, but you guys are all based on six hours. Okay, that's just. For the way, that's the lowest you can do it. So like, for example, the police, the, the police department, it'll be eight hours. Anybody that's not appointed or is, uh, elected will be at six hours. And all the other employees will be at seven hours a day, which is what they work.
Yeah.
So it just, we just have to have approval for it, so we can. Submit this to them. Right, that's all.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we, uh, approve the standard workday resolution for employees.
Also.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Anyone opposed? Okay. LoSAP.
Um, I need, we have, LoSAP is our, um.
Penflex.
Penflex is our administrator for the, LoSAP is the. Length of service award that we give to the firefighters. And I just need permission to have, their, Penflex has been doing it for, since we started the program. Every year, we have to approve the, them to administer it, so it gives permission for trying to sign the contract. I'll make that motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Good?
That's it.
Okay, so I just wanted to give a couple of updates, uh, we had the. Train emergency drill on Sunday, November fifth, it was. Very successful, I believe.
Yeah, it took, it took about a half hour to do, and we had video of it. Because we had to drill them up over it, and. There didn't seem to be any problems, we listed.
We had two dozen participants, roughly?
Yep.
Okay, a holiday train will be, uh, Friday, November.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, at roughly four P M, they will be coming, the train.
Yeah. They'll have to come up here first.
We will be. Planning extensively for the crowd. Uh, and, uh, working through some security concerns, but we'll keep everybody informed about that, and.
I'd like to see somebody go out to the residents, maybe at least a week's notice.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Agreed. So we're putting some final details on Ryan's plan.
Yeah.
Uh, he wanted to wait till the. Uh, emergency drill was done and then put that together.
And we finalized the food bank.
Yeah, so, um, sacred.
I talked to.
Sacred heart, I was just gonna say.
Sacred heart is the benefactor of all the.
Actually, CPREL already reached out to them, I think giving them a thousand dollar donation.
Sacred heart, okay.
So, if it's okay with the board, we, I told, I told Sister Ray, she forgot the approval, but.
Um, is, is Meg on?
She was.
There's Meg. Uh, Meg, do you want to talk about?
I'm here.
Want to talk about the, uh. Uh, tree lighting and some other, uh, the, some other park related updates and such?
Sure. Uh, I just want to give an update on the October festivals that went on, um, our Fall Harvest Festival was held on Saturday, October twenty-first. Um, we were very fortunate to partner with the Capital District Farmers Market to hold it down in their shed. Um, it turned out to be a.
We lost.
A lot of, uh, sweet creations. Uh, we had help from the PBA, the DPW, the Fire Department. Um, the PBA sold food, the youth committee sold popcorn, cotton candy, and apples, various other items. Um, we had, the expenses were five hundred dollars for the band and. Eighty-six ninety-five for some decorations, but with the revenues that we collected, the overall price for the. Putting on the picnic or the harvest festival was seventy-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, then we had Conquer Treat held the following week. Again, we were very fortunate to hold it at the farmer's market. Um, I thought that worked out well as well, the cars were able to pull right inside the shed and open up their trunks from inside. Um, kept everybody out of the elements. Um. We had coffee, hot chocolate, water, um, we used the same decorations that we had from the, the week before. Um, the market was very, um, good about letting us keep the stuff down there, so we didn't have to bring it back and forth. And the expenses for that event were for just a cider and the donuts, uh, that were a hundred and seventy-five dollars and ten cents. Um, I've given statements to Bill Smith on these co- um, totals. Um, I'm very hopeful to be able to do these events down at the market again next year, because it was, uh, it's a great venue to. Do things out of if we can't use the park. Um, and then coming up, um. November eighteenth and nineteenth is Fill the Mayflower, the eighteenth, they hand out the bags, and nineteenth, to go back and fill the bags from one to three. Later that afternoon, um, we're doing a football game in the Menance Park. Uh, it's a viewing of the Bills and Jets game at, um, three o'clock start, four twenty-five game start. PBA will be selling food out of the concession stand. Uh, Brian already mentioned the holiday train. And we have, on December third, the tree lighting ceremony up in the park. Um, the Menance School Choir is going to come down, we have a Santa lined up. Um, decorating starts at two thirty, and the tree lighting will be at four thirty, followed by. Um, caroling, and then we'll have some refreshments.
So. Thank you so much, thank you, Meg.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you. Talk to you soon.
Okay.
Uh, do you want to talk about, well, okay, so we have a couple other items that we want to update on, right, the windows?
Yeah. Do you want to do the?
Yeah, the opening, the ceremonial opening. Come on. Um, aren't they under warrant?
The windows, the windows are all completed, they're all done, um. We have. Um, they did it all in less than a week. And they're all, they're all set.
They look great.
And they all work.
Oh, good. Uh, then we also completed the Troy isolation valve work in Skyler Flats.
Yep.
Uh, that is complete, it was successful, so we now have the ability to turn off the water from Troy. And, uh, we're working still to figure out, uh, how to, uh. Get supply from either Colony or from Waterfleet. So that was.
That was, now we can shut the water off and actually see. We found out that there's seventy-six pounds of pressure coming from Colony. But we have a hundred and something coming out. That's why we can't.
Uh.
Fill right now. But if the water's shut off, we'll be, we can do that.
Oh, okay.
Is that a test that we would have to run?
So that's the sec- that's the second phase of, of this project, is now that we have the isolation valve in place, that we can start working on. Simulating shut-off flare and the flow from other sources, so that's the next step of this project.
Okay.
Okay, and then.
Okay, what's the pressure we get from Troy? I mean. I'm going to his point of. You know?
I know exactly what it is, what it's like in the eighties.
Okay.
It's higher, it's higher, whatever it is, it's higher than we get from Colony.
Oh, yeah.
What about Waterfleet? So it's, we don't have to be concerned, like, if we ever had to do it, we're gonna get such high pressure, it's gonna bust.
No, 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 it's gonna be, it'll, it'll be less.
Oh, less. Troy's got a lot of pressure. Uh. We're still working on some revised proposals for the work for the High Reservoir Service.
Oh, we, we're, uh, you had mentioned.
There were some issues with a previous repair, so PCC, the contractor, and Labella are working out some additional change orders.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it means more money.
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
Is it still that front tank still?
The front, well, yes.
Okay.
Uh. The leaking stopped in the front, but it's still leaking in the back.
Oh.
So they believe that this, these additional repairs will hopefully stop the leak when going towards Doug's house.
So does that mean at some point we'll have to empty the back tank, is that what?
I'm sure, right, we're still talking about those options and, uh. Hopefully tomorrow, uh, PCC is going to get those final documents, and then Labella will go and review them.
Okay, good, I'm glad we're being thorough and doing this now rather than filling it back up for a compromised problem.
That was why. They stopped work and we reevaluate it, so.
Good.
Uh, the list, I think everyone got a list of, uh, the taxes that were re-levered to, uh. County. To the county, uh, the total was seventy thousand. Five hundred and twenty-three dollars, so. Just so everyone's aware, that's that. Um. I am working with the police, or the fire department on a revised chief's vehicle policy. David and I met, and we are working on just hammering out some final details to, uh, just updating that document. Um, and I should have that for the next meeting, so if you could put that on there. Uh. Let's see. Uh, there was an initial meeting with the Albany County IDA. Uh, for some tax relief for Regeneron. Uh, that we are still trying to hammer out some detail on. Um, the initial proposal basically asked for a twenty-three. Percent reduction in their taxes to the village. Uh, which. Uh, obviously is a concern, and the amount of twenty-three roughly, or no, it's like, it was like, uh.
Fifty.
Uh, so they pay fifty-five, so whatever twenty-three percent of that is, it was like fourteen thousand dollars. So, uh, not in the right direction, so we're gonna have a follow-up meeting to talk about that. Uh, and, uh, and hopefully that will, uh, the, we'll figure, we'll figure something out, that's.
But with your.
Yeah, so, uh, as part of that process, for their first submission to the IDA, we have to set a public. Hearing that is actually the IDA's meeting, the Albany County IDA's meeting, and that has been scheduled by the IDA for.
Eleven twenty-eight?
Uh, twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, I was getting, yeah, twenty-nine.
So the twenty-ninth, it'll be seven o'clock here. Um, it's not the village's meeting, just to be clear, it's the IDA's meeting that the village is hosting, since we're the municipality that the entity resides in. Um, before. That meeting, we will be having some discussions with them to see about a revised proposal.
And it's, they're, we're gonna use our Google Meet, or it's gonna be televised or streamed and.
Yeah.
Everything.
Uh, I think that is. I think that is all I had, Seth, you want to talk about, uh. Eleven seven?
Oh, the menorah?
Yeah.
Uh, December.
December, December.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, we will be having the annual menorah lighting, uh, rather than at the park, it'll be in, in here. Which will be much better for the crowd, especially given. It, last year, there was significant ice, um, rather than people slipping, it'll be in here, um, we had, uh. I think we had maybe sixty people there last year, hopefully we have that crowd again this year. Um, Rabbi Mordechai Rubin will be bringing, uh, goodies for everybody as usual, uh, potato pancakes, latkes. Um, Hanukkah gelt for the kids, chocolate coins, um, should be a nice experience, so. I encourage all, regardless of your religious affiliation, to come and, and enjoy it. And, what was that?
The date.
Uh, um, December eleventh. At, uh, is it five o'clock?
Five.
Five P M, right here. Um, and I believe that'll be in the activities.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
How did we make out with the Amsterdam? Project and what's happening in communications to the residents and the bus department?
National Grid is replacing all the gas lines, the top part of Amsterdam and North Pearl. And we sent out an emergency notice to all those residents. Let them know that's happening, but they're all told National Grid went around and put cards on everybody's houses.
And the transportation company.
Yeah. The schools were notified, but they also, they will let the buses go through it.
I understand, but I'm in Nan Road. The bus driver texts me because the high school driver had told her she wasn't going to be able to get through, even though that wasn't the truth. And said, I can't come up your street to get your kid. And I said, no, no.
I will revise this.
Thank you. Just because she was like, had I known, I wouldn't have texted all these because families walked up to Villa to get on the bus. Because they got the message from the bus driver that they couldn't. And she's like, had I known that it wasn't a main issue, I wouldn't have sent that message. I don't think there's such thing as over-communication.
So, yeah, and Val shared a postcard that she got, which was postmarked ten twenty-seven, and that was the first time we had any information on that.
So, and there's no, like, I know they signed the intent to do the work, but they don't have to give us, like, ten days' notice. There's no, like, anything on how much notice they have to give us if they're going to come rip up the street?
They don't, they don't rip up the whole street. They only do sections, but they, but they, they've been doing this for two years. The whole project's been going on for over two years now.
They have been made abundantly clear that we were not thrilled with finding it out via a postcard from one of our residents.
First of all, observation on that?
Sure.
AGI is a contractor for National Grid. In terms of our work last year, should be very careful, make sure they observe. Absolute control of traffic. Because section of traffic last year was. And on the hill, it's going to be even worse.
Don, will you make sure?
Are they going to have it for that?
They'll hop to at this point, if it be required.
I'm going to ask.
Handle that too.
Thank you.
Tim, you want to talk about? The Hudson River Greenway grant we submitted?
Yes, we were, we were successful with our Hudson River Greenway grant for the Little River project. We're going to look for. An access point for the village to the Little River. It's going to be surveyed that the purpose of the project, we're working with La Bella. To, to review this and we'll be looking for some village residents possibly to be involved in some of that work. It's a ten thousand dollar grant with, and the village will provide fifty percent matching, so ten thousand matching. Brian has signed the MOU that's been submitted successfully to the Hudson River Greenway. And did we do the, did we do the resolution for the matching plan already?
Yeah, last week.
We did, yeah, we did last week. We did the matching last week, so I think we're good on that. But in any case, so that's going to be moving forward fairly shortly. And I may be looking to you.
Kevin Franklin has all my old maps.
Yeah, I, he actually, he actually scanned them and sent them to me and.
So.
But I think he'd be good to be.
DOT's plans.
Have some personal input on, on this as well, because there is going to be some community involvement. And I think maybe Mr. Harris over there, possibly, you might be interested as well.
Yes, very much so, as a, as a kayaker and.
Yeah.
Yes.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Don, good question. With the trees that were removed on Broadway by DOT, do they have any plans on replacing them?
Not sure.
So, Funnish mentioned that Channel thirteen reached out to me today. And the general manager, just, just to say hello and such, and so I reminded him that they. Wanted to work with us on some trees to celebrate their hundredth anniversary and our hundredth anniversary. So I, I have a point to reconnect with him to see if they would do a community event this coming spring to replant some of the trees.
And if possible, maybe we can scatter the trees around the village, not just one central location, maybe each street can get a tree?
Yep, so, so the goal was to, to, to put at least a couple in the park, like.
Oh.
In places, in places where they should have gone in replacement of the ones that we had to take out. So, so that's in works. What else I want to mention?
That was it, that's everything.
Okay, anyone else on board? Okay, so we'll go to public comment now. Bill, you want to go?
Yes.
We have three minutes, buddy.
I'm Bill Garvey. I'm at five eighty-seven Broadway here in Menance. Now, Brian, I thank you for writing me that letter, which I turned over five letters to. You made a promise to me. I thank you that you kept your promise and you lived up to it. One thing I said in one of my letters is about whistle blowing from freight trains. I said. They could blow whistles, but only if there's an emergency. And I agree, it's not unlawful to do, so I still thank you for that letter. Now, a couple others. Now, while I'm glad to see that our village finally repaired Menan Road, which needed to be repaired so badly. However, we still have some several village streets that still need to be repaired, so there's a list of them already. And that should include the north and south part of Oakwood Avenue. That street barely needs to be repaired. It's been like this for years. So when will that be repaired? Is it being worked on or what's the story?
We're still looking at that.
All right, well, hopefully maybe early sometime next year we'll get that north and south street done. Now, I'd like to propose a village ordinance requiring that several of our village public buildings here in Menance. Use colored pipeline codes for welfare, public safety, efficiency, and quality life reasons. When I worked at the Albany County sewer district back in the nineteen seventies. Yeah, we're here in Menance. I noticed the colored pipelines and I found, learned what they indicate. And when I worked for the state, I was in the boiler room, I found, learned about the color pipelines codes with the indicator. So I would hope, and I'm going to make a perform a proposal sometime during next year. One more thing. Now, on July, now, September twenty-ninth nineteen, twenty twenty-three. While picking up trash just outside the concession stand store building at Menance Lulu. Baseball section, I observed one large jug with gasoline in that large jug. So I already reported the problem to the police. And when I saw Karen Stewart, you know, I had told her, you know, what's, what's, why is it this jug of gasoline being outside the building? And here she, so she forgot to get, take it out of there. Let's not, from now on, let's not leave jug, drugs, gasoline or oil, any flammable materials outside because you never know. We might have some idiot out of kids. It could set that concession stand on fire. So she says that will not happen again. But let's be sure we tell, inform everyone, do not leave inflammable on materials outside of their building within its very safe storage. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Just wanted to let everyone know that the school is having their indoor yard sale on November eighteen. Donations can be brought off on the seventeenth from two, twelve to six. Sale is on Saturday, the eighteenth from ten to two. Don's okay with putting our big signs out with the week of the Saturday.
Whatever you need to do.
Can you talk donations the seventeenth from two to six?
From twelve to six, because it's a half day of school, so. Menance School remains, we have a full six Friday and a sale. We missed the exit days in the slide, so we'll be trying to push it out on some.
And what kind of items are you looking for?
Pretty much anything you'd see in a yard sale or a yard sale, anything that's not hazardous or, you know. Anything insoluble.
Okay, who's next? Go ahead, Cindy.
Hi, I'm Cindy Price. I live on North Lions Avenue. The point I want to bring up today is this insurance, okay? I don't work for the village. I know a lot about it. And in today's world. Offering somebody the platinum and gold insurance is quite a benefit. It, it's not always offered, the silver, the bronze, they're, they're totally acceptable. People paying a deductible, everybody pays a deductible. Why do our associate, our village associates not pay deductible? It's twenty twenty-three, so I do think you need to look at that. I mean, maybe they've been spoiled and get this all the time. But, but that's not the case. You know, many people out there have deductibles. Some of them are even five grand. And, you know, to, to offer everybody here that benefit, that, that's an extreme luxury. In today's thing, because prices of insurance have gone up astronomically. And I, I commend him for trying to make the village pay for that, their deductible. But that's a huge perk. I mean, we could save the village a lot of money by not doing that, and it's not anything extreme. People are used to paying for a deductible. That, that's today's world. So I just want to bring that point up, and I, I don't know where this platinum is and gold and. I, I mean, they're, they're quite the benefit.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Cindy. Mike?
Okay, twenty-three model report. Number one, I'm going to again ask that the village post their financial results on the website. It hasn't been done. What was put in last month's meeting minutes was absolutely useless. What I found very concerning was it Phil's commentary, what he made about what happened to the budget. Didn't even make it into the meeting minutes. And nobody even knows what he said. Thirdly. I, I'm going to ask you when you meet the next time with the latest canvas distributor. Can you talk about this untapped sales tax revenue that's going to come to the village? Where that's going to come from? You already have one. It's going to be right down the street. I'm not sure how that's all going to work out. I appreciate that you would ask him that question and try and get some clarity around that. I think it's very important. The last thing is, I didn't understand the discussion tonight about the transfer of the, I will point, it was a budget amendment. That you were transferring money, then it was a transfer from one general ledger account to another. I don't know what it was. But then the transfer wasn't, because the budget amendment is you're, you're changing the budget.
The budget, there was two, there was two. The budget amendment was for the insurance. Because people, so our police officers went, you know, turned twenty-six or whatever the age is. And they weren't on the initial budget because they were under their parents' insurance.
Well, I understand that.
And then.
When you say the budget amendment, it's, it's you're changing the budget.
Right.
Yes. And then someone said, well, we're transferring the money.
Well, so the first thing is to amend the budget. And then the second thing is to actually fund that area.
Where did you transfer it from?
Unappropriate.
And you know how much money is in the unappropriated?
Phil does. Phil does.
Do you guys know? That's my concern is this is the second or third time you've transferred money from the unallocated. I don't think you know how much money is in that unallocated to make that transfer. That's my point. Thank you.
So as we discussed. When you made that comment the last time, I agree. The, the comments that, that should have been in a summary report, and I promise you, we're, we're getting there. We're getting, we're getting there. The new software has the ability to produce much better reports.
But why can't you, but your software today produces reports? Why can't you put the report that Bill must use to summarize the month's activities? Just post it on the website. I don't see what the big deal is. I understand you're going to a new, new software, which is fine, great.
That, but that was.
Today.
That thing that report you got is what, the only report that you can get out of it. That's how we know that.
Which is a, a year-to-date budget to have.
You didn't even read that. I don't even know what it was. If you looked at the meeting, you could tell me, if you looked at those meeting minutes, you could determine what the year-to-date budget was in those items. I'll give you a lot of credit because I could not figure it out whatsoever.
Noted.
As your vice-concern, we both serve on the audit committee for Menan School. And so I don't want to cut into my other time, but I, I think that this is a, is a very serious thing.
Absolutely noted. I, I, I agree, and, and I promise we're working towards that.
Okay, never mind. We certainly, we certainly know a lot more about Fusion than we did when that certificate of occupancy was first granted, right? And, and of course, I still have grave concerns over this, this whole situation with Fusion. Of course, the mayor and I had some discussions last week regarding exactly what the process was. For determining that the Fusion did in fact meet the criteria for an OTP. The mayor doesn't have to disclose to me what that process was, and he didn't. I, he blocked my attempts to speak to the building inspector, so, you know, I didn't. And which is every right to do, he blocked my attempts for internal foil requests. So I have no idea how we arrived at this decision. And I think that that's, I, I think that's concerning. I think that that shows that there's certainly the potential for some less than impartial. Behind-the-scenes things occurring that got those guys the CO. And, and again, I mean, Fusion is a startup company. They have no track record of success. And in fact, contrary to having a track record of success, they have a track record of deception. They filed a letter with the Albany County for their LGU application. Which was a false instrument. There was a letter that somebody unauthorized at the Chamber of Commerce wrote. As a letter of recommendation saying that Fusion had operations up and running with plans to open more operations in Syracuse and Rochester. That was false. That's a felony. I, I mean, I don't know who prosecutes these things, but that's a felony with, with, which can get you four years in jail on five thousand dollar fine. And on top of that, Fusion has been engaged in New York State doing false advertising. And we can go back in the internet archives and find versions of their website where they are advertising locations which they don't have. And they show pictures of these locations, which are stock photos, which I did reverse image searches for. So they're portraying these places which aren't open, they're not certified. One of those locations was out and out denied certification in that state. Because they had no track record and because of their deceptive activities. So that's a concern of, of mine. And, and really, I, I think, I think this board needs to initiate a comprehensive investigation, the CO issuance process. Independent of previous findings. This investigation should examine the new information that we're now all aware of. Look, if the mayor was told that this is a high-end outfit and all we're going to get is executives and all it's going to be is private insurance. And it's going to be this boutique thing, and we've got a track record of success. And, and he believes that, you know, that, that this is, you know, all on the up and up, I can understand how, how things can go sideways. But now that we know this stuff, I think it's incumbent upon the board to go back and revisit this. Because this, it, it's a completely different situation. So that's, that's that.
Anyone else? Public comment? Steve?
I was just wondering about progress on the concerns I brought before about the look of four-four Broadway. And also of Cranesville. They're both, you know. Four-four-four Broadway looks like hell. I know that they presented to the village some great photos of what they were going to make that place look like. I just want to know what you guys are planning on doing to hold them accountable to that. Because any other business that has come in here and proposed, they were made held accountable to build their building. To what they presented to everybody and got approved for. And four-four-four Broadway has been getting a pass for a really, really long time. And it's, it's just a poor outlook. And I mean, Cranesville cleaned up, kind of. It's kind of like sweeping your dust into a corner. Yes, they got rid of the building, but it, it, it's not an empty lot. It's still blocks there. There's still, it's just garbage. And I would, I would ask you guys to hold them accountable. Clean it up. Make it an empty lot to sell.
So it is being marketed, Cranesville. And currently, Lyle looked at it, there's no violation because they're in a commercial zone. Their business is concrete. What they have there is concrete. And so while it might not be presentable, it's not in violation. Four forty-four, he is writing them a notice of violation for several issues and pursuing that, so, yeah.
Yeah, they have a court date.
And they have another court date. I believe it's on November twentieth.
Do they show up?
Yes.
So we are, we are pursuing that aggressively. Yeah. Stevie, you okay?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, if the Verizon Tower ever got powered used so that they were ready for.
It is fully powered now and. It is fully powered. Verizon is the only occupant on that tower. My understanding is they're going to be. All three.
All three are going to be on the tower eventually.
Yeah. Yeah.
I guess I wonder if there's any reconsideration of what's going on on the corridor bound across the street from Regeneron. Now that they're actually going to build there. I would hope that, you know, we might have some new tenants that might be interested, you know, in populating that area, such as maybe grocery stores. Maybe pharmacies, maybe something that would be beneficial to that Regeneron, but other residents. And consideration should be given to maybe some of the things we have done in the past relative to that area. given that, you know, maybe that would be the best, some of those best tenants that have talked about being there, like the Met Cell Clinic near there, which might not be good for, maybe for the development of that region. I just think we'd ask the board to consider those back.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Paul Harvard or something.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I know you guys had the emergency drill on the other side of the tracks, and I think 10 or 12 participants isn't a good showing, there's probably 75 to 80 homes just in that area. And also the use of the park, do you have any plans to, like, maybe add the emergency plan to the paperwork that people use to rent the park, so they know what's going on? You also have a couple of churches and a library there, I don't know if they were included in the drill.
Well, just to let you know, everybody in the, from Broadway in, in the total heart was giving notices about the, the drill. The day of the drill, we did an Everbridge just for the people west of the bridge, the rest of the trail, rest, west of the rail trail there.
The rail.
Say it three times real fast, Tom.
Not gonna happen. But, um, so there was plenty of notice about it too, and plus it was.
Two dozen.
Two dozen people left, but everybody was aware of it.
Right, well, my, my, my guess, the major concern for me would be then the use of the park and that type of stuff, seeing how it seems as though probably 40 to 50% use of the park are people that don't live in the village, so they would have no idea.
A couple, a bunch of years ago, my early years on the board, Paul Cooney had actually recommended signs that say evacuation route with arrows. Is that something, I mean, maybe we could run that by our emergency preparedness group?
We could look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if we just add the paperwork to the registration form for the park, I mean, at least they'd have some kind of knowledge and they'd be able to, you know, maybe make it part of the thing, you know, like when you're using a facility, you gotta give where the fire exits are and things like that, so when someone uses the park, it might be a good idea to have them make the people that are there with them aware of what's going on, I mean, you have Tuesday night concerts in the park, we have a lot of people that come that don't live in the village, and they don't, they won't know what to do when the siren goes off, and their phones aren't gonna go off either.
We will definitely look into that.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Regardless of that, there was that same plan years ago, making driveway wider in the school pit.
Yeah.
We've limited access to that area of the village. Also, some lockbox on the gate, top of Menan Road, it'd be functional by the way. Because if the train is on the tracks, you're done.
Right.
There's, that was back when they had the big explosion of the fuel trains.
Yeah.
There, there is, there is two locks on the bridge, there's a, the gate at the top of the hill. There's a knock box where every emergency vehicle has, can get access to it. And there's a village lock, which they can, it can be used. So, and the police department has the village lock, the fire department and EMS have the, the knock box locked.
But what if you're on this side of the track? I mean, and, and you have the key, no, you know.
There, there's multiple keys, I mean, the whole fire department has it, the, the fire department has both keys. But then, the, the police department has it.
Do they have access when they're coming down 378 to get to the lock?
Yes.
You can definitely answer that.
Yeah. So there, there's, everybody that, all the emergency people do have keys to it, they can get in there.
Anyone else?
I'd love to say that I thought the evacuation was great, the road worked well. I only came up on like, down school path, I drove it, my four-wheel drive, Sequoia, plenty of room, thank you.
All right.
So, this used to be called public forum, now it's called public comment?
Yes.
You know, years ago, it was always at, it was always at the beginning of the program, now it began, was there a reason that we moved this to the end of the program at the night?
We were running into longer and longer agendas, technically, the board doesn't have to have any public comment. So, what's required is that the village residents have access to see this meeting transpire. So, we have had large agendas, we need to get through that stuff, so that the village can keep running. So, really, it is called public comment, that is what it is, it is designed to be, and that was established on July 3rd during our organizational meeting.
Oh, I, I never find me, it was nice when it was in the beginning of the program.
I understand, but we have things that we have to get accomplished at the beginning. We're also really disappointed, we didn't see your name on the real disaster list, yes, right?
Well, my sister, because my nephew got married on Saturday, we were doing family things in the afternoon. So I had to move people around and we were not available.
Right.
So, I don't want to use up my three minutes, but getting back to the, the health insurance, because I have questions on that too. Um, as far as, because what Donnie said about having to report hours for employees, so, so it's clear in my mind, in order to be eligible for health insurance as a village employee and/or the trustees are eligible too, correct? So you don't have to do a 40-hour work week, you can be part-time and, and get health insurance?
The village board is eligible for health insurance to the village.
Right, but do you have to give a minimum amount of hours, or it's just?
Just, the, the board members are the only ones that can get it, if, if they're part-time, you can't get health insurance.
Because you said you're reporting seven-hour work days, so there's a portion of the employees that only work seven-hour work days?
Yeah, village office, village office DPW only works, they work 35 hours a week.
We're not in the village.
Right. No, right.
We're not part of that plan.
Correct. So, DPW is eliminated because they're unionized, so they're not eligible?
Well, they're.
They get Teamsters insurance.
Teamsters, yeah.
Right, right, they're not eligible through, your, which you're offering the platinum or the gold cabinet, it's just a, it's a, it's a, it's a, someone's award. So is it, so the regular employees that are not part of the DPW, is, are the police officers eligible?
Yes, and they work, they work an eight-hour shift, where the village office, the court are the only two, two people that work 35 hours, and DPW does also.
Right, but as far as the people that are eligible for health insurance, and do we cover 100% of the health insurance, or does the employee make the contribution?
80%.
Pay 80%? So that's, that's what's confusing to me about you all taking, doing an HRA for the deductible. So, I guess that math is tricky, if you're paying, you know, using an HRA and doing that.
The difference in the premium to the village, even if we reimburse that entire deductible, is still less.
So you garnish wages for the 20%?
Yes, well, they go, they, well, yeah, regardless, it's right on their paycheck, that was at the page.
I'm just, I'm just curious, because health insurance isn't bad, and if you're only getting the five and a half percent increase, that's, wow. I want my one hundred.
Well, no, the health insurance, if we stay with the current plan, it'd be 13.6%.
That's what's out there, that's what I'm talking about, I think 11 and 13% of health insurance is held on now. So it's, it's, it's gonna be inevitable that those plans are gonna.
But I think it would be that, but they're, they're offsetting it by them covering them.
Well, they're only covering 80%, the employee still has to make a 20% contribution. There's, the employee's still getting garnished 20%, correct?
So if they pay 20% of the, the health insurance plus.
20% of the premium.
And the, the premium.
So, but you're taking the premium, adding the deductible in as the whole package, or you're just straight out paying the deductible as part of a health savings?
They have to seek reimbursement for some of the deduct, the deductible items, so.
Yeah, it's, it's just not clear, and I'm confused somehow, that's a big.
As, as with most insurance.
Right. But, but I think what they're offering them is extreme, a very nice benefit.
Well, the question would be if you look at other villages.
So, to give you an example, the town of, or the Village of Colony pays 100%, and they have the exact same thing. We pay 80%.
Who are you talking about?
Our group is 65?
There's only, no, because not everybody gets it, there's.
50?
There's less than, there's like, probably in the 40s.
That's my recommendation, mid 40s.
It was in the, in the 40s.
So it's a small group, you don't have much flexibility for negotiation.
Forty-three, not small.
It's a small, it's a small group.
In insurance world, it's small. It's under 100, under 100 is, is considered small.
Anyone else? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, we don't have anything for executives at the time.
Second.
All those a favor?
All right, anyone opposed? Yeah, I know.
No, I loved it. I loved it.
Thank you.
And I want to know, I was.
Oh, oh, oh. Thank you, thank you.